I call the Thursday, October 6th Borough Council Work Session to order. Ms. Bright, will you call it all?
Sure. Council President Fred Bush.
Here.
Council Vice President Michelle Panopoulos.
Here.
Council Member Barbara Porter.
Here.
Council Member Rob McGrady.
Here.
Council Member Cindy Rippers. Council Member Bob Weisberg.
I'm here on Zoom.
Council Member Ira Winston.
Here.
Mayor Andrea Deutsch.
Here.
All right. Are there any proposed changes or additions to the agenda tonight? Certainly, I say none. Our next is a commendation. So, do you want to speak here?
I think you want to.
Well, so, the skate park was not originally an idea coming from council. It came from the community. And the community member who brought this to council's attention and repeatedly brought it to council's attention is here today. So, we're very pleased at the way that the skate park has turned out. It's been a great community focus, and it's worked extremely well. So, we have a certificate of commendation to present to Harry Quaid today for his work in bringing the skate park to Narbor. Would you like to come over here?
Yeah, sure.
Congratulations, and thank you for what you've done. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Harry. We can't really claim you as one of our own since you're near. But you're near enough that we are going to say you're a member of our community. And I just want to personally thank you for really being a model of positive advocacy. You never got frustrated when the skate park wasn't coming together with any delays. You've just always brought yourself, brought your family, brought your friends, brought your friends' families to show up and say, hey, here's why a skate park would be so great. Here's why we build community and bring people together. And you were right. So, thank you for that. On behalf of all the skaters, I want to say thank you to you guys for helping this be a possibility. So, thank you. Thank you. You make it easy for us to vote yes. Thank you.
There we go. I can't follow that. Ms. Deutsch, do you have any comments?
Yes, I do. Since August, Sergeant Vernaccio has really assumed leadership of the Narbor Police Department. And I really, I just want to thank him so much for the leadership qualities he's shown and the way he's led the department. He's really done a wonderful job, and he's handled himself remarkably well. And I feel very confident in this interim period with him in charge. In that light, he has given me a couple of updates to a few things that happened in the borough since this summer, and I just wanted to update everyone as to what's going on. So, in August, beginning of August, there was an incident in the park with some graffiti and some vandalism. And I want to congratulate the Narbor Police Department. They have cleared the case. The actors have been charged, and that matter has now been closed. But thank you to them for their good work in finding out who did it and filing the appropriate charges. Also, just a quick update. I want to, I think everybody heard about the shooting incident that occurred on September 21st. Investigation's ongoing, but the injured individual is out of the hospital and is recovering. And I just want to give a special thank you to the officers that were involved, particularly Dan Dutton, Officer Belfi, and of course Sergeant Vernaccio. They've done a wonderful job. Also, a big thank you to the Lower Marion Police Department and the Montgomery County detectives who are helping to investigate the matter and will help do what they need to do to bring this matter to a close. So, thank you to them for all their hard work, and really much appreciated. And that is it.
Thank you, Mayor Deutsch. So, let's move on to public comments. Reminder, it'll be three minutes. Let's start with folks in the room. So, I'm just kind of going to start in the front row. Anybody have a comment? Second row, if you should make a public comment. State your name and your address.
John Constantine, 400 Narbor Avenue. Coming up closer, so it can be heard because on the videos, it doesn't come through.
Good.
I have a comment about the solid waste fee calculation. I guess there's some effort to make it fairer. Is that the right reason for adjusting the calculation?
So, we'll talk about that later on.
Okay. But with regards to the calculation, I still have difficulty following the numbers. It says there's 1,559 residential living units. That may be physical properties. There's duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes. There's 1,900-plus families in the borough, at least per the census report. So, these numbers don't quite add up. And then I also like to find out, does Republic actually provide that split? And if so, how do they get to that split on the dollars there? Because when I see the trucks go by, you know, they're picking up everywhere. I don't know how they, you know, allocate the weight load and disposal, you know, to see that that's appropriate. And then within the non-residential units there, or properties, in that case, 123, I don't think it's fair just dividing it by 123. I mean, you have 300 North Essex, that's 60 units itself. Montgomery Court and Narbor Avenue, Price Avenue, is at least 73 units. So, are you saying they're only going to be paying $1,200 when they have 60 units or 73 units?
I believe that... Well, I just want to remind everyone that this is a public comment, not a public question answer.
All right. So, we will drop into this.
I'm making my comments for you to find out the answers.
All right.
And then I'd also like to, I guess, echo the mayor's comments now about, you know, Officer Vernaccio doing a great job, you know, taking on the leadership role. Maybe we should think about, you know, doing that without a chief or making him chief, and we could save several hundred thousand dollars. If we need to additional forces, we can go with the Lower Marion. We've used them when we need fill-ins and stuff like that, right? You're looking for ways to save money, right? So, you could do these other projects.
Again, this is not a...
I do hear you.
And, I mean, in the packet itself, there was notation about Republic Services being looked at going to the township for, you know, utilizing their services. So, we could utilize the police force as well from Lower Marion, you know, to save money. You know, that's the biggest part of our budget, $1.9 million.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Constantine. Time's expired. All right. Anybody have a comment? Do you want to call a comment? All right, let's move to online.
All right. So, just a reminder for folks on Zoom, if you could either use the raise hand symbol on Zoom or literally raise your hand, I will call on you, and you'll get a prompt on your screen to be able to unmute and provide your 30-minute public comment. So, the first hand I see raised is Carol Rae Scanlon.
I'd like to echo our last speaker's frustration that we give a comment without an answer to it. Because sometimes, these are just simple questions that could be asked and answered. So, as my public comment, I'd like to, first of all, add Andrea Deutsch's comment and add Narbor the ambulance to their stellar service to Narbor, to the community during the incident that was recently, the shooting incident that was recently happening. Now, I'd like to ask a couple of questions about the Master Park Plan. Is that still on the table for an ad hoc committee? Because I had heard in the recent past that there was not going to be an ad hoc committee. So, I'm wondering, is that back on the table? It's in the packet. And if there is the ad hoc committee, Francis Sabine Park is a major stakeholder in Sabine Park and open space preservation for Narbor. And a representative from Francis Sabine Park would like to be on the committee for the Master Parks Plan. Now, how long do you anticipate the Master Park Plan to take to accomplish the task of making the Master Parks Plan with the surveys, the town hall meetings, and the interviews that are going to be done to find out what residents want for the parks? And how will the Master Park Plan's committee's job and timing work with the development plans of the Montgomery County Redevelopment Authority for 201 Sabine, as well as taking down the building for that property? And do you have developments to share from the Montgomery County Redevelopment Authority? So, if you're, this is a question that I have. And then another question I have is in regards to the EIT. Is this income stream going to be a direct line item in the budget, meaning the money that's collected can only be used for the stated purpose category of infrastructure? Or will this money be put in the general fund? And I'd like to know when I could get answers to these questions.
Are you finished, Carol Rae? All right. The short answer is we have no news on the RDA at this time. And other topics, we will be discussing the EIT later on.
If I could just add maybe just one comment to maybe address some of the concerns from Mr. Constantine and Ms. Scanlon. So, what we try to do during the council meetings is, like, I write down these questions as people ask them. And if it's an agenda item at the meeting, I do my best, you know, we do our best to address the question or concern that came up. And if it's something that isn't covered during the meeting, then I do, you know, genuinely try to make an effort to, you know, get questions answered for people after the meeting. So, I don't want people to think that, like, we're just, like, ignoring your questions.
Yeah. The Master Parks Plan will come at 9:00 a.m. in today's meeting, as you pointed out, Carol Rae. Any other public comments online?
Let's see here. I don't see any answers.
All right. Let's move on to P A, which is the preliminary plan for 146 Marion. Thanks, Mrs. Scanlon. Carol Rae, do you need to use any equipment, or what do you need?
Could you present, or make Joe have, Joe Havens, he's going to put the plans up for us.
Good evening, members of our council. Shall I review this while I'm speaking?
If you'd like, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Leave it as a little bit here. Thank you for your consideration of this plan this evening. Earlier this week, we were before the Planning Commission, which has a lot of familiarity with this plan for a couple of reasons. Number one, we had been before the Planning Commission, as well as you previously, to obtain approval of the tentative sketch plan for the development that we're going to be talking with you tonight about. This is a preliminary plan. And during the preliminary plan process, special attention is given to such items as sewer connections, stormwater management, and landscaping, and other miscellaneous provisions of the code that relate to the preliminary plan approval. The plan has been reviewed by the Montgomery County Planning Commission, by your staff, by the Borough Engineer Canoni, which serves to provide advice both on the civil engineering aspects of the plan, as well as on the landscape portion of the plan. And since you have not seen the preliminary plan and have not had the explanation of these various items, sewer, stormwater management, landscaping, we're prepared to do that this evening. And we have a few different people who would like to make that presentation, starting with our civil engineer, Chris Young. And I almost forgot that of great interest is the architecture of these new buildings. And as you know, we have an existing home that's going to be relocated right next door to where it is on Marion Avenue, on the same lot, but slid over. And where the home had been, there will be twins, a pair of twins. And on the Rockland Avenue side of the property, there will be two new cottages. And those new cottages are smaller units, which is nice. You're familiar with that, that it provides a nice new, smaller housing option for the two new residents of those cottages. And there were comments that were made by the Planning Commission. Mr. Bressin had prepared the Planning Commission's memorandum, and TOI trusts that you've seen it. It's included in your package of materials. And the Planning Commission has recommended the approval of the plan. They had a couple of comments, and we're in full accord to comply with those particular comments. And we will address them this evening and show you how we would do that. The other thing that we had requested of the Planning Commission was that the plan be viewed as both a preliminary and a final plan. Because with all of the work that has been done right from the beginning with the tentative sketch, and particularly in connection with the new ordinance, when this site was very carefully analyzed, and the new units that were to go on the site were very carefully analyzed, we really are at a point where we believe that all of the ordinance concerns that relate to not only the preliminary plan approval, but the final plan approval are addressed. And I think we had a concurrence of that opinion by the Borough Engineer Eric Johnson. And that was really the unanimous recommendation also of the Planning Commission, that it be viewed as a preliminary final plan. And of course, even a final plan is subject to conditions and to a developer's agreement that your solicitor and staff are very careful to make sure that all of the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed before there is a sign off on the plans and a recordation of the plans, together with the security that's required under the planning code. So, with that introduction, I'm going to ask Chris Young to talk to you a little bit about the civil engineering, Jack Burns to talk to you about the architecture. I think these are pretty exciting new units, and Burn Panzak to talk to you about all the new landscaping that will be part of the project.
So, Chris? Thank you. Good evening. So, as Fred said, last time we were in view, we had tentative sketch plans. It was a two-page plan set. We now have fully engineered plans, which is a 10-page plan set, including site plans and also the landscape plans. So, Joe, if you don't mind switching to the first plan, thank you. So, this is the illustrative plan sheet, which is just an overview. We have shows the buildings, walkways, driveways, the buildings, and driveways did not change at all from tentative sketch. There were a few minor tweaks to the walkways and patios, just to work with grading. You can see a couple stepping stones from the cottage walkways over to the driveway. Joe, you could switch to page two. Is the record plan. This is what would be recorded at Montgomery County that has all the bulk zoning information, setbacks, property lines, meets and bounds. You could switch to page three, Joe. This is the existing condition slash demolition plan, which was part of the original tentative sketch plan sheet. So, this one didn't change. You could switch to the next. Page four is the grading and utility plan. This is really where a bulk of the engineering design is shown. And so, we have utility laterals for each house, sewer, water, electric. One of the questions during tentative sketch is how we would connect this sewer for the Rockland Avenue homes. There was not sewer in front of the street. However, there was sewer to the west, down the street in Rockland, and there was also some little uphill on the eastern side, right by the intersection with Ridden House. We had got some extra survey information to determine which would be the better connection point. And we determined the one further down Rockland would be better. One, it's a gravity connection. We wouldn't have as many crossings to cross, but it would also allow for some other properties along the Rockland to connect from that terminal manhole. We added a retaining wall in between the Marion and the Rockland properties. We had had the first floor elevations on the tentative sketch plan, but we really added more detail, one-foot contours, five elevations to show how the grading would work around the houses and driveways. We have the stormwater management systems are now fully designed, so there's a system in front of each building to meet all the borough required volume and rate control. The systems along Rockland are a little bit oversized, so there will be no overflow from those systems according to the design requirements. The two systems on Marion will have a little overflow. And so, we have an outlet pipe that is piped down in the right way and connects to an existing inlet in Marion Avenue, so that any overflow would be piped to the inlet as opposed to going over land, over the sidewalk around the street. And so, that's a quick overview of that sheet that really has the bulk of it. I'm sure it looks like just a lot of lines and labels. I'm happy to go in any further detail on that or answer questions. Joe, if you don't mind switching to page five. Those are really the details for stormwater. That's a profile of the new sewer line in Rockland Avenue. If you switch to page six, this is the erosion sediment control plan, which shows some of the door construction features, like tree protection fencing, steel fence, construction entrances, topsoil stop piles, things like that. If you switch to page seven, the last sheet are really those erosion control details that are the standard county details. So, that's a quick overview. I'm happy to answer any questions. Maybe we do our presentation first, and maybe some of the other questions might be answered by another team member. But thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Jack Burns, Jack Burns Architecture. Joe, if you could continue the slideshow, please. What I'm going to run through are floor plans of the different building types that we have out there and some elevation show compliance, the overall tour features. This is the basement first floor of the two cottages in the back. They'll be similar. There's going to be some grading differences around the perimeters, but they're going to be essentially the same building. Front porch, little entry hall, powder room, basement access, living room, dining room, kitchen, and a one-car garage. We have a change show. Slide out of order. This is the elevations for the twins that are located in the front left of the property on Marion Avenue. You can see the party wall in the middle, two front porches with steps running up to the front there. And then on the right, you see the rear elevation of those with some corresponding grading. And then in the bottom left, we slightly cropped, but we have the compliance with the areas for the fenestration and the overall side areas. Next slide, please. Here is the second story of the cottage, showing the front porch on the left, master bedroom, bathroom, closet, and then two bedrooms with a shared hall bath. On the right is the roof plan for those as well. Next slide. These are the side elevations of the twins that are on Marion Avenue. Marion Avenue will be the left on the top one and to the right on the bottom. So, the bottom joint shows the exterior base that's facing. And the corresponding elevations for the two cottages at the rear. Next sheet, please. There's a series of drawings here of the existing home. We've had it surveyed. And here's some of the ideas. This is the existing building as it stands right now. That's a preliminary idea, but not yet stabilized. And again, we've looked at it with the facade area and the fenestration, a few cells as well. Next slide, please. And here we have the Marion Avenue elevation at the top. Show the two new buildings. And below, we have the Rockland Avenue with the two cottages. And some ideas about the materials on the exterior.
Burn Panzak, landscape architect for the project. Joe, if we could go to the, how about the illustrative plan? Okay. So, you know, we proceed through the ordinance, look at requirements, we take the site plan, and then we apply the ordinance requirements to that. We've been able to preserve three trees along Marion Avenue. There are a few other trees along Lot 3 in this area that will be preserved. We looked at sort of the setbacks and utility impacts to trees, and we believe that there's 30% of most of these existing trees to remain. And we believe that our development will allow those trees to continue to thrive in the areas that they're in. We then, you know, look at the various criteria and then apply them to the site. We've got a very space-efficient site where, you know, hedgerows and relatively tight canopy trees would be appropriate. And as Chris had said, there's a retaining wall through the center of the site, splitting the Marion side from the Rockland side. And in an attempt to provide privacy and buffering between the plans, we've arrayed a hedge along the backs of the properties, and we've also done the same thing to a certain degree along the side property lines. We've added street trees where street trees will be appropriate. And, you know, in, I guess, Joe, if we go to the elevations, right, this, okay, this is the Marion Avenue side. And what we believe is that this gives us a reasonable idea of what the streetscape would look like along Marion, with the duplex units, lots 3 and 2 to the left, and Lot 1 to the right. The Lot 1 location is the existing home that will be moved from the middle of lots 3 and 2 to Lot 1. The two trees that are sort of bracketing this image are two of the trees that are being preserved. There's one tree, a street tree, that's approximately in the middle of the properties that wasn't placed on this elevation, but that will be there and will remain. If we go to the next, Joe, this is the Rockland elevation. And again, depicting street trees, other required trees, and landscaping that's not necessarily part of ordinance requirements, but we wanted to add some of the foundation landscaping and hedgerows and things in there, just to give you an idea of how the rest of the project would round out. So, we went to the Planning Commission. There was a comment about the array of species that we were using. And, Joe, if we go to the, well, yes, to this, we felt like a response to native species was a comment that the Planning Commission made, and that we are happy to revisit our plan. What you see in the light green or the lime green color are all of the species that were native, that were included on the original landscape plan. The darker green in this case are native species that we believe we can add to the plan, make it a better plan, a more native species heavy plan. So, there still remain a few hedgerows that are non-native, and some of the concerns there were shade tolerance and density and size. And we felt like having those remain in the species that we were proposing would be the best thing to do. But we definitely took the Planning Commission point of, you know, integrating more native species into the plan, and that's what we've done. The one additional thing in terms of landscaping, top left of the sheet, we do have a note there... there that says additional stream planting. This was an area that we did not have plantings in the beginning, and we also felt like that was a good comment from the planning commission, and we would plan to extend that buffer along the western edge of Lot 1 to mitigate any issues between Lot 1 and the neighboring property. And I believe with that, that completes my presentation.
That completes our representation. Chris had just mentioned to me that in terms of the review letters, that we are basically in a will comply status. All the comments that were presented in both the civil engineering and the landscape plan reviews were looking to comply with all of those. I should note also that there is a requirement that we go to the shade tree commission. We had expected to have been there before we were here, but that meeting got rescheduled for early next week, and we will appear before the shade tree commission. Of course, their concern is the street trees, the shade trees that are along the respective streets, and we certainly expect to have a very good cooperative discussion with that. So if there are any questions, we're all here to answer them. I should say that Summer Knight is also here, and she's, as the owner of the property, has been a very tenet and engaged in the process, and I think pleased with the outcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob?
So I noticed that fireplaces are built in a way that would accommodate a gas fireplace with like that setup with that external end. So I'm wondering if you can consider, you know, an electric construction.
Oh, I'm certain that we could consider that, yes. As opposed to a gas-powered fireplace?
Yeah, well, at gas power anywhere else, you know, I mean, we're very interested. You can see from the planning commission in considering no gas will go, you know, in the future. And this new construction will last for 80 years, so you're potentially locking in fossil fuels that don't need to be there, right? I live across the street, and our house is all electric, so we know it can be done with heat pumps and electric fireplaces. So I'd just ask you to consider.
All right, any other questions I can answer, Robert?
In the planning commission's letter to us, one of the things that they recommended was that the applicant investigate the used green building practices and report back to council on those things at the time of final, or, and I'm like, I don't know if that's supposed to be tonight or if that's going to come later, because tonight we did get report on the native species, which they also had said council should see before final approval, here before final approval. So I'm just wondering where that stands, because that fits in very nicely with Rob's perspective.
And thanks. You caught us in oversight. We had intended to address that. In fact, Jack was prepared to address that.
Yes, we reviewed the draft. The draft is before everyone here, and there's a lot of great points in that. And the project really lends itself very well to doing things in a green fashion. Relocating the existing building in and of itself is somewhat of a green action, you know, maintaining all those existing materials that were used years and years and years ago is fantastic. Some of the other individual items that we represented, like the carbon footprint stuff that we looked at in the column one, there were a number of items on that. A lot of the, sorry, the materials that we ended up using tend to be within the 500-mile radius. Generally, the heavier materials tend to be from closer to where we are. So windows, concrete blocks, things like nuts and bolts type building materials tend to be from somewhere close by, which should be pretty easy for us to comply with. One of the other items was the EV vehicles. And for the two cottages, it seems like commonplace at this point to leave a circuit of some kind available for an EV vehicle that may be used. So we'll be making allowance for that in electrical panel, and then whoever, whatever specific model they have, then we ready to put right into the wall. And then some of the other ones, which are kind of common sense, but simplifying the structure of a building, we strive to do that anyway. It's cost and green sometimes go hand in hand, so that's something we can certainly do. Yeah, those are the high points of what we looked at.
Just to follow up, you're planning to heat all of these properties with gas, gas water heaters, gas heat for the homes?
We have not made any commitment to a system of any kind as far as that type of thing goes yet.
Okay.
Or certainly, there's still very much buildings without interiors yet, I guess at this point. The nature of the submission process, we're back and forth a lot, so we're moving into that the further along the process we go.
I think it would make, it would dovetail very nicely with the borough's plan for being renewable by, is it 2030, right? If this was, if this is any new construction, but especially these were not with gas or other fossil fuels, it'd be wonderful.
Heard. I heard you. Thanks. So the other unusual ask is to consider the preliminary plan also as a final plan. And we see that, so planning commission has recommended that we consider this preliminary plan as a final plan. Anybody have concerns or questions about that concept? Now, obviously, this plan has gone back and forth between the borough and the design group for quite a while now, so there's been a lot of oversight on this project from the planning commission, who presented to us several times. So, you know, I can see where the request comes from, but it doesn't change our usual procedures, so just want to make sure everybody is comfortable with that. Looks like everybody is. All right. Any other questions for the group here? All right, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Me too. All right. Up next is BP, Master Park Plan Committee and DCNR grant opportunity. Samantha?
Yes, I just sort of now. Zoom in there. Okay. All right. So included in your packet was a memo recapping the last Parks and Recreation Board meeting where this idea was discussed. To go back in history a little bit here, council back in May had considered creation of an ad hoc master park plan committee based on a document that was provided to council by the previous Parks and Rec Board a number of years prior. Given the changeover in the membership of the Parks and Recreation Board, there was an opportunity to implement that plan. And given that a number of the members, or pretty much almost all the members who were involved in writing the original document, that recommended the creation of the ad hoc master park plan committee, no longer involved in the Parks and Rec Board. So the question was posed to the new members of the Parks and Rec Board that they would like to directly be involved in master park planning, or if they would like to, you know, continue with the concept of council forming an ad hoc master park plan committee. The group had a really good discussion on it, and they found that a number of their members would not be able to participate in the time commitments required within the master park plan. So they did recommend in favor of council forming a master park plan ad hoc committee. However, they did ask council to consider, instead of only appointing one member of the Parks and Rec to it, to allow four members of Parks and Rec who are interested in serving on it to participate. And those members are Dennis Brogan, Jean Girock, Dennis Allen, and Chris McLeod. And to go back to my original memo and answer a couple of the questions that Carol Marie asked us, as the original memo notes, the anticipated time commitment for master park planning is 12 to 15 months. So it'd be about the timeframe it would take to get that plan taken care of. And then also notes further down in the original May memo that one of the duties of the committee would be to interview stakeholders that have an interest in a robust park system, including but not limited to the Department of Business Association, Cycling Club, New Rise and Senior Center, and various youth and adult athletic groups. So if, you know, council does appoint this body, you know, they'll make those decisions without interviewing stakeholders and gathering that information for the master park plan. And then maybe the second component is in regards to funding the master park plan, but if you want me to hold off on that while we make sure council is good with the master park plan committee concept, or do you want me to go and talk about the grant as well?
We can break it up. All right. So the idea is we're going to have a group composed of volunteers from boards and commissions. And Parks and Rec obviously wants to take a significant role. Shelby?
Oh, the recommendation was originally, I think, for the board to be composed of a representative of the Shade Tree Commission, planning commission, Nurburgring Athletic Association. We called for two council members and one odd member from Parks Integration Board. So I think if we do four members, we still have an odd number, which isn't actually a grant committee, I don't know the voting is. I'll like grant, they'll have an odd number here, I said, because it's consensus recommendation typically, but, you know, that would make nine. That's probably about as large as you do one. And I mean, you know, it's like a sweet spot for the size of those kinds of committees, and I don't know exactly what it is for this, but that's probably the outer boundary of what you could do. So, I mean, I prefer to, you know, to myself personally, prefer to go with Parks and Recreation, you know, desire, I have a lot of representation on the board, and I think that that's fine.
And we also.
Does any, does, does, does anybody have any other thoughts about the composition of this board, you know, you had some time to think about it, recommends since this memo was first put in place?
I guess the one thought I have is if it is going to include two members of Borough Council, are there two people who are like, yes, I want, I have the time for that? So that would be the only question that I would have. And, but I like the idea of, you know, having, I'm perfectly comfortable with the idea of following the Parks and Rec's recommendation for the four people to elect to be on it. It makes sense to me to have, I mean, that's part of the reason we have the Parks and Rec Board.
Yeah, I think perhaps one council member would be sufficient.
I think, yeah, I don't think it's critical having a hot number.
Well, and then we have, we had a request from Friends of Savin Park to be.
As a stakeholder. Yeah. I would, let's say, we had a, you know, we had a big conversation in May when we first talked about this idea about, sorry, about who all should and shouldn't be on it. And again, let's say that I really tried to talk through a council then, and I'll really emphasize now, again, this concept of being on the committee versus being a stakeholder. And I think that, I think that we did a great job of identifying, of doing a job of identifying who should be in each of those roles. And I'm recommending, like I kind of said earlier, I think that Friends of Savin Park, I think, you know, getting their input would be great, and I think doing it as part of the stakeholder process would be, I think would be the ideal way to do that.
All right, well, I'm seeing a lot of nods around the table, so if we can proceed with the idea of the committee as laid on the memo, with minor changes to the membership as needed, but the four, the request from Parks and Recreation, I have four hundred signatures.
So will we be reaching out to the NAA, planning commission, Shade Tree, to see if they each have, well, willing and willing to participate?
I think Shade Tree might not be, it might not be quite their thing, and we're trees in the world, but.
Well, maybe what we can do is I can, you know, reach out to the chair of the Shade Tree Commission, planning commission, and the executive director of the Athletic Association, confirm their ability to participate, and then come back to council with that information. And then at that time, council can appoint the members of the committee as well as determine what council member or members will be on it.
Okay, sounds good. Start with the money.
Sure. So, you know, doing, doing master park planning is not a, not a frivolous expenditure by name. So, you know, based on my past experience, having done one in my last job relatively recently, and Parks and Rec early this year actually did hear from a park banner who submitted a scope of work and cost estimate. Based on all that information, I think we would be looking at around $70,000 for master park plan. That being said, I'm hopeful we can do it with very little borough taxpayer funds involved. The funding strategy that I'm proposing for it is DCR, the State Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, has announced a special one-time grant round, usually their grants are in the spring, which part of it will kind of messes up on our timeframe for master park planning, and we talked about it earlier this year, but the timing of this grant is kind of perfect for what we want to do. That would cover up to 80% of the cost of the master park plan for us. So that would leave a borough match of $14,000. So if you could say 70, take 80% off, that's $14,000. In addition, at the exact same time here, PICO has their Green Region Grant Program going on, which provides up to $10,000 for various park and open space related expenses, including planning. So if we were able to get both the PICO funding and DCR funding, the actual borough taxpayer expense on master park plan would only be $4,000. So the Parks and Rec Board, I had a chance to discuss it with them. I think I might have been dreaming this, but I'm pretty sure last month at the May meeting, we talked about grant strategy, and this concept was discussed as well, and all those groups were on board with it. And so I've agreed to a request from the Parks and Rec Board to write out the draft grant application. Thankfully, in those two different grants, since it's for the same thing, you know, you can copy and paste a lot of the, a lot of the material. So my hope would be for this, the PICO grants due, which we'll talk about a little bit later in the agenda, but it's actually due at the end of next week. So council would need to approve a resolution. I've been working on it a little bit longer, and I've been waiting until tonight to start working on it. Council would need to pass a resolution tonight in order for us to be able to submit that grant application. And then the DCR grant's due at the end of the month, so Parks and Recreation would have a chance to, well, they'd have a chance to review both of the grants before they're submitted, their meeting on the 12th. And then council, it could get a final review at least on the DCR grant before that's submitted, before the 27th, if we're all good with that.
Do you have questions about this, your concerns? Okay, so sounds good. This will be coming up again, actually, item 9 in May for that resolution Samantha just mentioned. Okay. 2023 project.
All right, I should have, I should have brought a glass of water with me here, here tonight. And I'll just, I'll just tell you, I'm getting my screen ready here to share, so we can all kind of, you know, if you're, if you're playing along at home, you can keep up with what we're talking about here. I'm not going to, there's 15 slides in this presentation. I'm not going to go through all 15 slides in detail. A lot of these slides were created to provide reference for council and the public about how certain borough revenues and expenses work and definitions of things. So I'm really just going to try to focus now on some, you know, big picture sort of themes and some of the major decisions I need some input from Borough Council on in order to continue working on the budget and have a, have a more defined budget document for you all to review in your November work. all to review at your November work session. That's the work session, starting scrolling through all the 146 merian documents we got. You know, my goal tonight, as like with last year, is not to get deep, deep into the numbers tonight, that's really what I prefer to do at the November meeting. Again, really the goal, here we go, really the goal tonight, again, is to talk about sort of big picture budget situation and get a sense of council's funding priorities for 2023. Share my screen here, so that everyone can, not just people here, but everyone can see Sorry, I have a little bit of zoom lag going on here. Here we go. All right. All right, so, talking about 2023 budget tonight, again, I'm not going to read everything on this slide, I just want to note that for the benefit of the public and council, you know, I like to start on a positive note, these are the things we've accomplished already this year, and these are the sort of things that, you know, people's tax dollars, they deserve to know what, you know, what sort of things they've been accomplished with them. And this is a list, not of everything we've done, but of some, some highlights here. As we talked about last year, I try to base funding decisions based on the various plans the borough has created, most notably the comprehensive plan, but also as well as, you know, the plan and action plan, the payment improvement plan, so on and so forth. The one caveat I'll note is that some things that are really important for us to do are not explicitly listed as an action item in the comprehensive plan, like repairing sewer lines, which we'll talk about later on, but I think we can agree those things are important. So in general, so the budget, we're going to talk a little bit how we're doing so far this year, if council made no, just left the borough on autopilot for next year, how the budget would do next year, and then talk about what tweaks we want to make to that baseline budget, based on the budget requests we've gotten, and then what's going to happen after tonight with the budget. I'm going to reference at various points, the GFOA, that's the Government Finance Officers' Association, which is the main, you know, sort of body that finance professionals turn to. I do want, I'm not going to read all this, but I do want to spend a minute on this slide. You know, an unfortunate kind of thing about the way my job works is, it's, I only have to come to council and I need to ask you for more money for things that weren't allocated in the budget, and it's unfortunately rare where I have to come to you all and ask for something that would save the borough money. So I want to make sure council and the public knows that I'm, we're not constantly, like, you know, blowing through the budget, going over budget here. There's a lot of things that the borough is trying to do to be more efficient with taxpayer dollars and, you know, be really mindful of that responsibility that we have with them. So I do have this slide here that mentions some of the larger things that we've done to be more efficient with tax funding. There's a chart here that I got, and again, just kind of show where we're at, again, to kind of show that we're not just like recklessly spending everyone's money, I'll just note from this chart here, the borough is, as of 2020, which was the most recent year that data was available statewide, the borough was 20th out of the 63 municipalities in Montgomery County in regards to tax expenditures per capita. And, and then honestly, the only reason we're even that high is because, you know, certain municipalities, especially the further away you get from the city of Philadelphia, don't offer as many services as municipalities closer to the city do, such as libraries, police, and other sort of services like that, that are expected of municipalities like ours. So I'm going to honestly skip most of these slides, obviously, when I'm done, if you have specific questions, I'm happy to answer them from council, but basically what I tried to do over these next few slides is, again, more of a reference for everyone, is to outline, you know, what are, again, what are our different departments, you know, looking at those categories the state has of comparing wasteful spending, you know, how are we spending our money? And also, just kind of wanted to show the human element here, make sure everyone in the public knows who the people actually providing these services for them are, so we have pictures in here of the folks in the borough making those things happen. In case you're wondering on this picture, that is a picture of an actual Norberg Borough sort of line that, that broke earlier this year, and public works had to fix. The flip side of point is not just reducing expenditures, but it's how we raise revenues without, you know, creating new taxes on people, and how do we ensure that everyone is paying their, their fair share? So something we, you know, so again, this list is here for a reference of, of the sort of things we've done to try and, try and do that. And, again, in the same sort of, same sort of chart as before, this is a chart showing how our different revenue sources compare to other places, you know, in the county and the state. And then, I do actually want to talk for now on property taxes, because they are such a, you know, large portion of our total budget. You know, this is an obligatory slide that every municipality has in every budget presentation, but I do feel like I need to do it every year. So, just a reminder to the public, when you pay your property taxes, you know, keep in mind that of them, you know, this chunk here, part of the taxes you pay to the school district, and then this chunk here is what the borough is getting.
The school district is completely independent of Norberg, they're their own governing body.
Yes, the school board decides what those, what those rates are, the only portion of this thing that Borough Council has say over is this part in the middle here. You know, and then just looking at our tax rate, we haven't raised property taxes in three years now, and this chart kind of shows just over time in general, the borough has done kind of consistent in terms of millage, relatively small millage increases from year to year. The other half of how much money the borough gets from property taxes and what people pay isn't just our millage rate, it's what the assessed value of your property is, so I have a little definition about that. The main thing I want to emphasize to council and the public is that we don't, the assessed value of a property does not change when it gets sold, the assessed value of property only changes when there's significant construction on the property. So every month, the borough sends a list of our building permits to the county, they decide which ones seem large enough for more at reassessment, and then they go to the property and do the, do the reassessment. So on that note, this chart shows the total assessment value in the borough of all the properties historically. This chart only goes back to 2019, but you see 19, I should say 20, not 22, and 2021 are relatively flat, and trust me, if you take this chart back before 19, it's, it's pretty flat as well. However, in 2022, you see that there was this chunk added onto it here, and that was the result of 114 Forests, primarily the Elm apartment building. So right now, for the 2023 budget, again, because it's a baseline budget, it does not include any new revenue from, from 100 Forests, 203 Harvard, or 650 Montgomery Ave, just because those projects, two are under construction, one hasn't started construction, and as we get further into the budget process and we get a better sense of when those projects might get completed, we can make a better decision as to whether to include revenue from those properties and how much in the 2023 budget. Again, we just have, you know, again, general slides about how borough's various fees work, we are going to talk in detail about my proposal for solid waste fees and try to address some of the questions Mr. Constantine raised about that. And of course, we are going to talk in detail, a bit more in detail about the earned income tax, and during that time, I'll try to address the question that Ms. Scanlon raised. All right, so just a quick reminder, like I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, the baseline budget is what the 2023 budget will look like if we just kind of, you know, continue the borough as is as of our last council meeting. And basically, it just has itself that either we, that we, that council up through September has obligated the borough to have to pay. And I do want to note, even though it's October 6th, those financials are as of August 31st, just with the timing of getting bank statements and stuff, I finished up, I finished up bank reconciliations today, but I won't have, I won't have a chance to do the treasury report until early next week, so of course, when we do the November meeting, we'll have, you know, much more updated financials. Before we dig into those financials, just a quick note about how the borough financial structure works, we use fund accounting, we have certain revenues and expenses that can only be paid on certain funds, and thus, the borough, you know, the expenses and revenues of the borough are broken up by those, by those funds. Something we talked a bit about last year, that's going to be important to talk about again this year, is our fund balance policy, which is that the borough needs to have enough money set aside in each fund so that it can pay expenses throughout the year, because our revenues don't come in consistently throughout the year, but especially in the general fund, we do have bills we have to pay every single month. In addition, it's money that's there if, you know, if some sort of disastrous situation happens in the borough, we have money on hand to handle, you know, handle that. There's no set amount for each, for all funds, there's no set amount, but each fund has its own fund balance needs that we'll talk about as we go through each fund. So the general fund, that's the largest fund in the borough, it's the one where basically anything that isn't obligated or committed to another purpose is in the general fund, with two exceptions, the borough's state fire aid and pension aid that we get does get deposited into the general fund, and we are required to pass the fire aid on to the fire relief company, and we're obviously required to use state pension aid to pay towards our contributions to employee pensions. I'm recommending at this time, based upon the cash flow needs of the general fund, that it keeps a fund balance of $1 million. We have about four, about $4 million, 4.5 million in expenses out of the general fund each year, you know, so that would keep us above the GFOA recommended amount. I give a lot of credit to prior council and management for really, you know, getting the borough to a place to build up that fund balance, and I was thankful that council approved my recommendation to use the federal COVID funds that we received to bolster that fund balance and get it to a healthy level, you know, whereas in the past, the borough would have to do what's called a tax anticipation note, which basically is the equivalent of a municipal payday loan, so I'm very glad and thankful, like I said, to council and past management for getting us out of that situation. And certainly not a situation I would ever want to see us to have returned to. So looking at the general fund for the rest of the year, it's expected to have revenues that exceed expenses of about $60,000 at the end of the year. I'll actually say that since then, we've had a number of other positive impacts to the budget. If I was betting right now, I bet we're probably looking at more at $100,000 revenue exceeding expenses at the end of this year. And just for reference, that's about what we budgeted for this year. We had a large expense that we felt we were going to pay at the end of 2021, that ended up coming into play at the beginning of 2022, is the main reason why we got off track from that budget figure. And I get some of the reasons why, why, you know, why we're kind of ahead of budget here. Unfortunately, you know, they're not really necessarily sustainable things, which is important to consider for the 2023 budget, you know, real estate transfer taxes, we can't control those from year to year, and, you know, I know there's maybe a negative outlook for the real estate market next year with the interest rate increases and all that. Business privilege taxes, again, we're ahead of estimate. Do, parking unit revenue. We also have some pretty substantial insurance fails from consolidating some life insurance policies that we can't repeat in the future. And then one, another huge thing that happened, which I certainly don't want to repeat next year, is various staffing shortages. I'm happy maybe to talk with Mr. Constantine another time about, about, you know, why the borough is looking to replace the chief as opposed to recouping those savings. But just for tonight, that's outside the script of this, but I'm happy to chat about that at another, at another time. So basically, what happened is a lot of those savings, you know, we unfortunately as well had a lot of unplanned expenses this year related to, related to our capital, you know, capital items, and, you know, part of, part of the challenge of the borough has been keeping up with our infrastructure needs and our capital needs. You know, basically, every car that the borough owns just about, you know, broke down this year, had to be replaced pretty much. You know, we had to spend $500,000 this year replacing the air conditioning class system here at 100 Conway. Last year, we had the roof and the boiler go over a window that had to be replaced. Infrastructure, last week, talked to our engineer about how the boiler here at this property is at its end of life and is going to need to be replaced in, in the near future. You know, so we've had a lot of situations like that come up that we didn't have a choice and had to fix, which will factor into the EIT that we'll talk about later. So the baseline budget for 2023 calls for the general fund to have revenues that exceed expenses by $13,000. So that is a certain sense of good news, and that, and that at least we're starting off with a positive figure, albeit a not very large one. The challenge that we're going to talk about is looking at the different proposals we've received for the budget, if council were to approve all of those, you would then have expenses exceeding revenues by $260,000. That would leave us above the recommended $1 million fund balance, but not by much, so that's something, you know, that we're going to have to kind of talk through and figure out what our comfort level is, and then also evaluate the proposals on their own merits to determine whether it's appropriate to fund them. Also, just very briefly note that after this slideshow is done, earlier this week, I did also receive a request for the general fund from the Norberg Fire Company, and my hope and expectations, maybe the Public Health and Safety Committee can dig a little more into that and then come back to council next month with, with a recommendation on that, if that works for you. All right, so talking about what some of those specific requests are, some of these we're going to get more into detail on, for example, EIT, we're going to talk more in detail about, the home set exemption, we can talk more in detail about. But as we talked about before, we talked about implementing a local service tax. Looking at our fee schedule, something we're doing annually now to make sure that our expenses are being recouped by those fees, it looks like we do and should increase subdivision and land development application fees. We also have the idea last year, create an escrow for those, for those projects to make sure the borough isn't left holding the bag, so to speak, when one of those, if something goes wrong with one of those projects. However, talking with our auditor, in last year, there were new accounting standards passed that would require the borough to basically set up separate bank accounts for each escrow, and so, given that, you know, as far as I'm aware, in the last six years, the borough has only had one project where the developer kind of left the borough dealing with the engineering and legal review expenses, and the amount of costs that would incur on the borough to have to set up separate bank accounts for every escrow, I'm now recommending that we not require those escrows. The EAC, that's that we consider eliminating building permit fees for green building compliant projects, last year, council approved waiving those fees for alternative energy projects, but the EAC, that's that we go a little bit beyond that. I realize when we did. I realized when we did the fee schedule, that we did not actually on the fee schedule have the double permit costs for projects started without a permit. And we do have two or three of those we find out about each year. This might be one council wants to talk through a little bit more, a fee for a certificate of appropriateness. I know one of the things we had talked about the hard was not wanting to put undue burden on people. However, I will note that our, you know, our zoning officer does have to review those applications, and the borough does, you know, get a charge for that. So I would just ask if council has any appetite for, for implementing fees to cover some or all of those costs. Another big thing we'll talk about later in more detail is the creation of a green fund. We had talked a bit about that last year, and just with me being so new, just really trying to implement that. But having had a full, full calendar year in the borough, it's something I've had more time to work with the EAC and with Councilman McGreevy on, and serves a proposal to create that. However, to fund all the requests in the green fund, there would need to be a net impact of about $88,000 to the general fund. Let's see here. To the question Carol Marie raised about the earned income tax and whether it would be going into the general fund or not. So again, not only do our funds do they cover, the reason we have separate funds, like I said, is because they legally have certain funds, certain revenues and expenses that have to come out of them. And in the case of earned income tax, it's not a expense that is, that is legally obligated to a certain purpose. So legally, I can't put it in the capital fund. However, I am proposing, you know, an estimated, you know, revenue in the first year. I am proposing that all the money from the EIT would go to the home sit exemption, and the remainder would then immediately be transferred to the capital fund. Let's see here. Given the nature of inflation, I'm asking council to consider inflation-based raises for non-contractual borough employees. I'd also like council to consider the concept of implementing non-contractual merit bonuses for, for employees. And just so you know, I mean, these are just by request. I recognize we're talking about, you know, $260,000 expense over revenue. So there are certainly certain ones of these that I'm very open to talking of reducing or scaling back with for council. I was grateful to council that we had an intern this year. I thought he did great work on the borough website and the sustainability certification. So just wanted to ask council to consider having an intern again next summer. QuickBooks Online, I meant to do this, this year, and it just, it just didn't happen. Council did budget for, for QuickBooks upgrade this year. Our current desktop version of QuickBooks is at, it's at its end of support phase. I think I had previously proposed that we would upgrade to the next version of QuickBooks Desktop. However, QuickBooks unfortunately has moved to a model, it used to be by QuickBooks Desktop. It is also now a subscription-based model. So if we're going to be stuck in a subscription-based model, my preference would be if we had QuickBooks Online, because right now, that's the only thing staff cannot do, admin staff can't really do remotely, is access our QuickBooks software. We could even set it up, you know, or we could set up an account that would be like a read-only account if anyone from council, you know, at 3:00 in the morning wanted to check on a specific financial question or something like that. So, so something to consider. We've been talking about moving from MailChimp for our public communications to Everbridge, and that would be thankfully the county pays for that, so we would not have to pay anything for that. Changing our IT vendor, I'll be honest, I have not been pleased over the last year and a half or so with the performance of our current IT vendor. Their contract expires next summer, and at that time, I would like to get proposals for an alternate IT vendor. To her credit, Michelle Carroll, right before I started here, summer of 2020, spring 2021, had looked into getting alternate proposals, and the company we currently use was the cheapest proposal. However, it increasingly feels like a situation where the borough is getting what it's paying for in that regard. And I'll be happy when that time comes, or if you have more questions about that, I can give some specific examples of where, where we've had challenges with the IT vendor. Myself and Michelle Carroll have just some sort of standard training requests. These are just the same dues that we've had before for APM now, the Pennsylvania Association for Professional Municipal Management and the International City and County Management Association. As we discussed earlier tonight, $4,000 for the master park plan, getting out the potential grant funds. The community library asked for an inflationary increase to the support the borough provides to them. The Girl Scouts in Eastern PA that make use of the West Wing of Amy Windsor asked if the borough would be willing to consider going half the cost with them to repaint that room. Looking at the Nelson-Niagara study, and earlier this year, the parking committee had recommended in favor of the borough having at least a part-time parking controller in addition to our full-time line. And, you know, ultimately, our original, you know, that, while we ultimately were only able to have that for a few months, I, I would still think that that's a sound idea, and I want council to, you know, consider continuing with that. Also, a discussion with our public works crew, given the borough's acquisition of three elmwood, given the sidewalk inspection program, we really want to try and make time for our GIS mapping of sewer and stormwater lines. They were asking for additional staff support. And again, I have costs here for their full-time or part-time employee for that. Parks and Rec Board has been having some preliminary conversation about creating rental fees for elements of using Norbert Park. I'm not sure if I have the right number or not that one. We'll probably take a closer pencil to that number. Just like this year, myself and our public works manager are asking for funding to stormwater cambering and cleaning. I'll note the cost of the full-time, full-time and part-time parking controller. Those costs here are, actually, they are already net of the amounts of revenue that we would potentially bring in from, for hiring them. Let's see here. Given the amount of time that staff spends answering questions and concerns about trash, I wanted permission from council to take $4,500 from the solid waste fund to, you know, to address some of those costs the borough encounters. Let's see here. So this is still something that is definitely, you know, subject to, to change. And again, this number would definitely change depending on what direction council wants to go in regards to changes to our residential parking program that we've had ongoing conversations about. And then finally, I did, sorry, I didn't put it in here. I got a detail, I don't even think the police just said training, $4,500. I got a specific detailed list of each training they want to do. And I could pull that up and, and pull that up for council if you need that information. So that is the general fund. I don't know if you want to stop there and just talk about the general fund, or do you want me to get through, the other funds are much more straightforward if you want me to get through those and then, and then we can get into the requests.
Why don't you go through your other funds?
Yeah, they'll be, they'll be much, they'll be much faster. So the sewer fund, that's the money we collect from people of the sewer fees based upon their water usage that we use to, you know, keep sources to maintain. It has a very healthy fund balance. It's over $300,000. And I spoke with our public works manager about what the appropriate fund balance level was. In particular, with that fund, cash flow isn't really a big concern. It's really more we need money if a sewer line breaks so we can immediately fix it. And he told me that if he can imagine making a job that'll be more than $150,000. So that's my recommended fund balance. And if we approve the requests we have here, it'll bring that fund balance down to 250, which is well above that $150,000. And those two requests are, Public Works, their mapping project has already identified a sewer line on Haverford Avenue that they think needs to be repaired, as well as continued funding for inspection and maintenance of our sewer lines. So the solid waste fund right now has a fund balance of around $150,000. I actually do think that fund balance probably needs to bump up a little bit based on our bills from Republic. So talking about the, the fee for a minute and try to answer some of Mr. Constantine's questions about that. So the 1,559 residential living units, that came from our tax collector's billing vendor. So the company she uses to actually send out the tax bills. I told us those are the number of properties that get tax bills in the borough. And this is based on county information as well. So basically, what I did, you know, part of the challenge with this, I will admit, I do think that Mr. Constantine brought up, you know, a good, a good point, and that the way that this is structured, which is a product of how Republic currently bills us, is for non-residential properties, yes, this does include the apartment buildings as well as the other commercial businesses. You know, the apartment buildings were a particular challenge because the way our bill and contract with Republic works is, for some reason, when Republic did their contract a few years ago with the borough, they have, they estimated the borough has 2,100 units for trash service, which is not, not the case. Even if you factor in all the apartment units, according to the tax collector's bill, billing system vendor, total property, total living units in the borough is around 1,900, which is closer to that number that Mr. Constantine cited. However, all meant, the first time I did, and so the borough gets two bills from Republic. We get one bill for everything that's under that contract. For some reason, after the contract was established, the borough realized it needed additional services from Republic, most notably the dumpsters and trash cans and things in the commercial area for commercial properties. So, so now the borough gets a second bill from Republic to provide the trash service that we do for those properties. So the apartment buildings, I was stuck in a bit of conundrum in that, do I lump them in with residential properties, or do I lump them in with commercial properties? And the challenge with that, in talking this through with, with our tax collector and her billing vendor, if I had lumped them in with residential living units, the cost for that, for the apartment building would be far, far, far higher than what they're paying in the current millage right now. Like Montgomery Court Apartments went from paying about $10,000 a year in solid waste to like $30,000 a year in solid waste. So the least worst way of doing it, and also, I mean, the, I mean, the fact they're paying, you know, I think that, given like cost of burrow, you know, $1,200 for commercial service, I did a little bit of Googling as well. I mean, that's kind of in line with what commercial trash service costs. Again, the main goal here is that properties in the borough with, like any fee, should be paying as close as possible as we can estimate the cost of providing the service to them. And so what I would offer to council and the public is that these fees would be solely for 2023, and then following 2023, we're going to have either a new trash contract, or we're going to have, or we're going to have a different service provider, whether it's the township or even possibly the borough doing it, depending on how everything works out of all that. So I would say in 2024, I could come up with, you know, not say these numbers aren't accurate, but I could come up with even more accurate numbers, you know, after 2023, once we have, you know, a different trash contractor system in place.
So this is your, this is your best estimate of how to pass through directly the costs that the borough is getting from, from our trash hall. Trash hall is charging X amount per unit, and we are going to pass those, the cost on to the, to the community directly. So that's, that's where these numbers are coming from. They are coming directly from the trash hall. So we're not going to do questions at this time.
If you want to call, so Mr. Constantine? Yeah, like I said, if you want to chat after, like afterwards, I'm happy to, you know, get an email or set up some type of that. So for the solid waste fund, again, we have this proposed fee change, which would be a net, net neutral for the borough budget. And again, my previous request to take $4,500 from this fund and allocate it to, to the general fund to cover admin and staff time for answering trash questions and concerns.
So we should also be clear that along with this change, we would be reducing the property tax millage. So right now, the costs for solid waste are coming out of property tax millage. Okay? So, yeah, it's a 2.1.
Do you want to go down?
2.1 millage. So we would be eliminating that, that from the millage. So the millage would go down, and instead, there would be this fee that would be a flat fee. So that, you know, depends on the value of the house, what the effect is on the, on the home owner. The average property in Norbert, I think, is over $150,000 in value. So the average property makes a slight reduction.
Yeah, and, and the other, the other thing I would, that I realized I didn't answer that was a question Mr. Constantine raises, the way Republic bills us, they don't, they don't, they don't bill us based upon the actual usage of a property in terms of how much trash they produce. It's like, if you're this type of property, this is, you know, if you're under this one bill, this is your rate, and if you're under this other bill, this is the rate, and it doesn't matter how much trash is being generated.
I have a question back. So it's, I have a first question, I might have some follow-ups, but are we at liberty to just say, say this Republic contract, they bill us X per unit, they have their way they do, but for us, it's a, it's a, it's like an annual amount?
Yeah.
Are we at liberty to distribute that however we wish in terms of, I mean, obviously, I don't mean grossly in that group.
Yeah.
Do you have to do it the same amount per, per living unit, or?
So the other challenge is?
Would you be at liberty to do something like, say, this is our commercial properties, we take that off? Okay, now this is what we know, we, or we're residential. So we only get apartment buildings and say $100 per unit, right? Or something like that, per living unit in an apartment. So then we like calculate that and then take that out, and then what's left, we distribute evenly through the remaining, like, non?
Yeah, so if council wanted me to do it that way, I could revise the fees and do it that way.
We're allowed to do it that way.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Just as long as, we just have to, and there's, I think you covered the important points, we, yeah, we just have to remember that the only info I have is the two bills from Republic, and then in terms of our actual billing system through the property tax bills, I only have five categories of properties, so we're like apartments, residential, commercial, well, and exempt to not knowing we don't get bills. So we really have three categories, so apartments, commercial, and residential.
Right, I mean, so apartments, we know how many units are in each apartment, right?
Yeah.
So, I mean, even if I've been open, I don't know, we should try and slice and dice this to where we're like, multi-family, except, you know, how many people are living in there, you know? But, I mean, we could, if we're allowed to, just take the apartments as a separate category and say like $100 per living unit, and then that might sit better with people.
Yeah, I could certainly, I could certainly redo it that way. Instead of just doing residential and non-residential, I could certainly do residential, commercial, apartment.
Thank you.
Do the exempt properties have to pay for the trash? And they don't pay a millage, but they might have to pay the trash.
So they actually don't pay sewer fees either right now, because they, because, again, I mean, our only billing nothing we really have is through, through property Cause they, cause again, I mean, our only billing nothing we really have is through, through property taxes. And I would say after 2023, I would say for 2024, I think, I think I would certainly want to reach out to those exempt properties and give them kind of a year's heads up that, you know, yeah, starting in 2024, they should be paying. We're not talking that many, we're only talking sixteen properties, but they should be paying sewer and solid and trash fees yet. So I should make a couple notes here.
All right, so let's, let's let her get through the rest of the presentation. I think we'll get more questions.
So the capital fund, that has the definition, capital projects are those that cost at least five thousand dollars. Previous was twenty-five hundred, but we had so many things that were falling under that amount. And I listed some of the capital stuff we're doing right now. All right, so the challenge to doing fund balance in the capital fund is like every project in the capital fund has its own dedicated revenues and expenses. So I can't, there's, there's no way I could tell you a total capital fund fund balance. I could tell you like for the Norwood Ave Bridge project, this is how much, you know, what our fund balance is, or for the fire truck, you know, what it is. But I can't tell you that for the whole fund. So as discussed at the last council meeting, there's a multi-year plan, not that many years, over this year, next year, pretty much, from the police department to convert over to a all EV patrol fleet. So that, those costs are included in here. The EIT revenue, that'll be going into the capital fund. As we discussed with Public Works earlier this year, this year, they're getting a, a new truck to replace the one that broke down. They also have another truck that is due for replacement and is pretty much off the verge of being defunct. Thankfully, that truck, talking to the Public Works manager, has a decent resale value though. So this eighty-five thousand dollar number would actually find it being closer to, I got that info after I made this slide, would probably be closer to forty or fifty thousand dollars after netting out the sale of the existing vehicle. Parks and Rec could talk about adding some more picnic tables over by the pavilion area, especially if we're going to start renting out. And this is probably at high cost, especially if we're going to start renting out some of that area. Norwood's second club asks that we roll over the continued expenditure we have for our portion of the Mainline Greenway. Maybe at the next council meeting or something, I can talk more about where that project is at. The biggie in the capital fund that the infrastructure committee discussed last week is replacing the channel and the pedestrian bridge where Elmwood Avenue dead ends over by, by Windwood Road. I will note, this cost includes two things. The bridge part is about fifty thousand and the channel part is about a hundred and fifty thousand. The channel part is, according to the burrow engineer, absolutely essential that we do. The bridge part, however, that's, I'm not going to call it discretion. I mean, I know a lot of people use it, but you know, if you wanted to, you know, save some money somewhere temporarily, you could consider putting that off. The Burris Pollution Reduction Plan, we are unfortunately well behind on. Thankfully, I got news that this morning or yesterday in the morning, that DEP has extended its permits for stormwater for two years for municipalities.
That's good.
But you know, just, I don't know, just with all the staffing changes at the burrow and everything, I, I don't think we've accomplished any of our pollution reduction plan items that we told DEP we were going to do in 2020. So to get started on that, we are doing bump outs this year. We told DEP we were going to do twenty-four bump outs. We're doing four this year. Another thing we told them we would do is basically is create a stormwater BMP dust management practice over by Eighty Windsor. Over, if you're walking from the parking lot towards the back of Eighty Windsor and you look to your right, there's like an open grassy sort of area there. We basically said we would put a rain garden there. So our Public Works manager got quotes from Shriner to kind of clear that area out to do the rain garden. And then Public Works would, you know, get the plantings and than the rain garden there. Public Works frequently has to rent a core drill for projects they do. And so it's ultimately determined it will be cheaper in the long run for the burrow just buy a core drill instead of renting it every time. Didn't have info as of this slide, but again, this week I found out the estimated cost of that would be thirty-five hundred dollars. Highway A fund, that's the state gas tax money that we get, that we can use for road maintenance. There are no requests for that fund. As we talked about infrastructure, I really don't want to do any road paving until we know for sure that the sewer and stormwater pipes are where they need to be, because I don't want to pave the road just so the road have to tear it up when the sewer line or stormwater line fails. I feel pretty good talking to Public Works that in 2024, we'll be in a position to start out paving. And we'll, you know, I think we have a pretty aggressive plan talking with infrastructure to get that done over a two or three year period to get the, our road paving plan from 2020 implemented and goes back on schedule with that. So the green fund, so the biggest reason I, I would agree with folks that I think we need the green fund is the way that burrow budgeting works is anything within a fund is basically use it or lose it. And so what we've been doing in past years is we've been allocating ten thousand dollars generally for climate action plan implementation. And a number of the things that we want to do in terms of that implementation costs more than ten thousand dollars. However, our EAC and PHS, our Public Health and Safety Committee, they don't have the ability to build up any money because they don't have their own, their own fund for that money. So any of that ten thousand doesn't get spent a year. It basically goes back into, you know, the pot and then council has to reallocate money the next year. So if they have the green fund, any excess revenues they have in a given year would carry over to the next year and they could build up money that could be used for, you know, figure ticket things out of the climate action plan. So some of the specific requests that came my way for it, council is part of the police and Public Works vehicles. Given that temporarily the police will have some gas card vehicles and Public Works with technology this time, we're going to have to get gas card vehicles, are making carbon offset contributions, which were reviewed with the EAC. Another idea that, that's come my way is, and this might change depending on what happens. We're going to talk at our next meeting about community choice aggregation. But an idea was giving people a financial incentive to switch to renewable energy. Basically, the burrow would offset the cost difference between traditional, you know, non-renewable electricity and the cost for someone to get a renewable supplier. So the idea was we would allocate a hundred dollars, you know, next year for each household that proved that they had, were using a renewable supplier up to the first two hundred. So it, you know, it'd be great if there are more than two hundred people that are doing it, but I think it gives people an incentive to let the burrow know sooner than later that they've done it and will also put a cap so the budget doesn't get destroyed by it potentially. I heard some comments and requests that I thought was a good idea of considering in terms of multimodal transportation, some benches along Windsor Avenue. Cause right now, a holdup from people being able to make more use of walking around town, especially that area, is a lack of benches along that route. It looks like I excellently repeated the Mainline Greenway. So we can take that out of the capital fund and go over here. And then the biggest expense we're looking at, this is something that PHS has been talking about for quite a while. It's creating a curbside, it's starting to install some curbside electric vehicle chargers in the burrow for people who do not have driveways or otherwise the ability to install them themselves, to make use of them. We did a lot of research with Flow, the company that provides EV chargers, as to what might be ideal locations for them. And we identified six locations in the burrow that'll potentially be ideal for them based upon a both, it's almost a, an oxymoron, but I swear there are locations like this in the burrow where there aren't a lot of driveways, but there also is enough on-street parking that, that we wouldn't be, you know, as people make the change, EVs won't be disrupting people's ability to park on the street. There is one location we proposed that I do think maybe cuts a little too close in regards to that. There would be one proposed over, over near where Insignia and Ryan Christopher's are. And that's a pretty heavily parked area. And so far, the burrow has not, one of the things the parking committee has been working on is trying to broker agreements with private property owners to allow for public parking. And unfortunately, I have not made much headway with the property owner of Insignia yet on that. So I would suggest that from both a budget standpoint, and this is net of grant funding we would get from both DEP and PICO for it, I would suggest maybe eliminating that one. The other thing I'll offer, you know, we had decided when we did the two EV chargers we have that the fees would be set just to cover the burrow's operating expenses to encourage use and adoption of them. Council could, you know, either now or in the future, could change those fees to also include the installation costs for the chargers to help over time recoup some of those upfront expenses. But again, that's kind of a policy decision above my pay grade. And the fund, this is just for more information on the police pension fund. Again, we don't really have any real control over that. It's just, it's included in our budget. It's just because it's technically, you know, that part of our financial picture. I don't necessarily want to talk about next steps yet. I think I'd rather maybe get into some of the weeds here and then we can talk about what the next steps look like, if that is okay.
All right, so that's a lot to digest. Questions on specific topics? General questions, any questions for us on this one? Surely there is. I'm just going to pause.
I'll say that was, you know, it's just such a great presentation, I guess. Or, or I spent longer talking than I meant to and I lost the crowd. I guess the biggest thing I need from council, I mean, if you think of questions, I'm happy to answer them, or if you think of questions after the meeting, whether you're a member of council or a member of the public, please feel free to reach out to me with them. The biggest thing I need tonight from council though is some sort of sense of, especially in the general fund, what is your tolerance, if any, for going into fund balance? And in regards to these requests we receive, specifically in, you know, in all the funds, you know, what your, if there are any of the requests that you would have apprehension about approving or if there are things that you'd be like, oh, we absolutely need to fund, you know, this request.
Well, I don't know, I'm not sure we're going to be able to hash that all out tonight. So I think that the procedure in the past has been, you know, if you have concerns that, you know, that aren't going to be addressed at the meeting, you email Samantha, you email me and you email Cindy. Put all three, Cindy is the chair of FNA, me as president, and Samantha. Just email all of us so we all know what the sort of topics of concern are. And then at the next meeting, we can focus in on the items that are sort of controversial and, you know, just not worry about the majority. If there's requests that everybody at council is comfortable with, we just move on with those and talk about the ones that people are concerned about. Anyway, bye, Robert.
So just a point of clarification, I guess I should have asked, is the infrastructure. If we don't, if we don't do the bridge, the pedestrian bridge, if there's no bridge, we can't reuse the existing one, I take it?
No, we're not.
Okay, so that's a big deal, okay? And then the other ones that seem like maybe there are a little bit, there's a little bit of flexibility on is the ones where you gave us two choices for personnel. So I mean, I think we have, we have to hear maybe a little bit more about like what the trade-offs are between those two choices. But I mean, those seem like fairly large, you know, amounts. Maybe the, maybe it's like, it might be as much as a hundred thousand or seventy-five thousand dollars between the two of them.
Sure. So the main trade-off I'm concerned about is, you know, given that we did advertising for a part-time parking controller earlier this year, is I think anytime you're doing a part-time job, I worry about candidate quality. And I also worry about, you know, employee retention with a part-time employee versus. So that would definitely be part of it. The other part of it is, well, first of all, parking enforcement, I mean, it's literally a job where the more time they have, you know, the more they can, the more they can do of it. And while it obviously isn't intended to be a revenue-based job, like our, our goal of parking enforcement is just that people park the way they should. And we just, you know, we have to charge fees because that's what motivates people to do what they should do. Obviously, the more someone's working, the more opportunity they're going to have to write tickets or, or more mindful people are going to be about paying the meters and that kind of thing. So there'll be more revenue from it. The other thing I would say too with that is, you know, again, the Nelson Nygaard study said that we actually should have two full-time parking employees. I think we probably were okay for the first months that we have. For the couple of months we had a part-time, full-time person. But again, I do know that the, that it was, it was, it was a tough candidate pool. I mean, the only reason we were able to even get the part-time person was because that person had originally interviewed for the full-time job. And we then said, hey, would you be open to doing a part-time? And hence, that's how we got anyone for a part-time role in that. Public Works is, again, I think the specific sort of stuff they're looking to accomplish, you know, the Public Works manager told me that a part-timer would be fine. But again, I kind of get into some questions about what sort of candidate are you going to get if it's, if it's a part-time versus a full-time role? And it could be those fears are unfounded. It could be, you know, we put advertising out for it and we, you know, get someone, I don't know. Like the ideal candidate, if you're looking part-time, would be someone who either recently retired and just, you know, only wants to do twenty hours a week or something like that, or, you know, who knows why.
I also raised some concerns when the part-time request came out that, you know, having a sort of a permanent employee at twenty-five hours a week is, seems somewhat exploitive, right? I mean, you're not paying their, their benefits in any way. It's the big savings, we're not paying the benefits. So if it's, if it's a crossing guard who's working ten hours a week, fair enough. But if it's somebody who's twenty-five hours a week and it's a permanent job, it's starting to cost them a lot.
A lot of everybody needs benefits.
And again, if there were a possibility of having someone who wanted to be like a crossing guard and a thirty-hour-a-week parking controller, that would make a full-time position.
Yeah.
There may be other combinations. I mean, I don't know that part-time Public Works, like half-time Public Works, half-time Parking Control might be a hard person to find, but you know.
So we absolutely, those are great points. And actually, some of those have been explored in the past. So originally, the candidate who was going to do, who was our part-time parking controller was offered that position because he had past experience being a crossing guard. And that was kind of what we had sort of envisioned with him. And that, again, ultimately didn't work out. But that to give some merit to the idea you're going out there. So that's true, that is an option. And actually, I did try, I talked with our Public Works manager and the police sergeant about the viability of, okay, instead of hiring two part-time people, what if we just call that a full-time person who had split time between these roles? And we weren't able to make the scheduling with it work. But it is something that, it is something that we've definitely had conversations about. I think there's, you know, I think, I think there is some merit to both of those ideas, absolutely.
So let me make another comment because you were concerned about how much fund balance to wear down. And it strikes me that there are some things in this general fund request that are one-time expenses and some that are ongoing. And I guess I would feel more comfortable about taking the fund balance for one-time expenses. But if it's an ongoing expense, it's just going to hit us next year. So I mean, if you can tease those out, that might help us understand. I know there's not a lot of them, but there are definitely some. I know there's not a lot of them, but there are definitely some.
And most agree with that. Again, the one caveat I'd like to emphasize for council and the public in regards to ongoing expenses is that, again, we do have, you know, 104 Center Construction, 203 Haverford, and, you know, and at some point, 650 Montgomery, that will provide significant ongoing revenue to the borough. And suddenly, maybe what, maybe what we decide is maybe some of these requests, we say, okay, well, once 104 and 203 Haverford come online, and we actually know and have the revenue at hand from those, we kind of have a tentative kind of agreement that I can then come to council and request, you know, that funding.
Right. I just, I guess sometimes I have no problem with, where, you know, taking the fund balance down for the one-time expenses.
But if we're going to run a structural deficit of $200,000, that's a problem every year. Somebody who has, I had the same reaction, I remember, when I saw that number. It's certainly big enough that we need to think twice. Anyone else have any specific questions or comments? Okay. So, you know, like I said, when you, once you've had time to digest some of the line items, I think, reach out to Cindy and Samantha and tell them, tell us all your thoughts on any of these that perhaps should be postponed and what seems like. Let's just talk about the ones that may need to be, maybe those.
And then just to emphasize as well, like I said, just a final reminder, and the request from the fire company, we'll talk about PHS and then what more info for council in the future on that.
Did the library give you anything other than inflation? Or did they break down?
Oh, I mean, they gave me their whole proposed 2023 budget, yeah. So council wants to see that, happy, if the council or anyone from the public wants to see that, I'm happy to provide it.
Okay. So it's there if we need it. Do we need to discuss the EIT scenarios on that, or what was the?
Oh, yeah, that's right. Thank you for reminding me about that. So based on our discussion at the last council meeting, this 2023, these budget proposals include a 1/2% EIT. And, you know, the borough put out, for the residents, trying to break a complex situation down into some, what we would think would be relatively common scenarios for people in terms of how the EIT, you know, the changes to the solid waste fees and the home sit exemption would affect people. And I think what we're trying to show to the public that for property owners in the borough, residential property owners in the borough, you know, the impact would be you would either be paying less in taxes or, you know, the impact would be much less than what it would be if we were just implementing an EIT on everyone. Really, I'm sorry, sorry, we did a property tax increase. And, I mean, really, the main people that are, you know, and this is, you know, myself, the main losers in this proposal, if you will, in terms of having to pay more new taxes are non-residents who work in, non-residents who live in a community that does not have an EIT, that work here in Narbera. But like I said, I, you know, believe pretty strongly in this proposal, and, you know, if I had to put my money where my mouth is to gain some credibility with council and the public on it, I'm certainly, you know, willing to do so. So, so I mean, that's the main group that I've found consistently, you know, paid more in taxes, obviously not benefiting from the home sit exemption.
Or the reduced mileage, right?
Or the, yeah, or the reduced mileage from, from changing, getting rid of that and the solid waste. Whereas, you know, and again, you know, even for people who, who work in the borough and own, you know, own their, live in their home that they pay property taxes on, unless you're, you know, a very wealthy person, the home sit exemption wipes out a good chunk of the EIT that, all or most of the EIT that people who own their home in the borough, not necessarily own their home, well, yeah, mortgage or own your home, people who live in a home, you know, that belongs to them, would have to, would have to pay.
So we did get one comment that, that we were maybe underestimating the complexity of administering such a system. And, but I believe you have a provider that does this, so maybe you could clarify that point.
Sure. So, yeah, I mean, I didn't have it implemented, but the last time I worked and had an EIT, like we taught almost every town in PA has an EIT. And, yeah, I mean, every now and then, someone would call the borough office with an EIT question, and we'd tell them, here's the number for Keystone, and, you know, and send them to that. And I mean, that's the same way with a lot of services in borough. Like I mentioned earlier, calls about, you know, understandably, we get calls about trash service or, or even things like the water service, that's probably a better example. We get calls about, you know, a question about that, and we tell people, oh, you need to call Aqua and just take care of that. So, yeah, I'm sure, especially in the first year of it, there'd probably, you know, be a learning curve for residents where we get a certain number of calls with questions. But again, it would just be a matter of directing people to, to Burkhymmer, who is the county EIT collector, to address those. I mean, that's part of, you know, what Burkhymmer gets, gets paid to do, so. And then the, you know, the other thing I would see, especially in the first year, is, again, we'll want to be really cognizant, you know, I think we've already tried to be cognizant about public notice about this. But I think especially if council does move forward with it, again, we'll want to send out further notes to people that, hey, this is coming. You know, then, you know, my cynical side kind of says, I'm sure we'll get some calls that are, you know, oh, no one at the borough, you know, told me that this was, this was happening. And, you know, and what those folks will do, our best, you know, to kind of explain the thought process that went into it, so. And the first year, yeah, there might be a little bit, but I don't think it would be overwhelming. And I think after the first year, you know, people would kind of understand what's going on, and I think it'd be a lot less after the first year.
Andrew, I see your name.
I do have a question. I got a request from a resident who, in the initial writings, it seemed like it was saying that people who pay the Philadelphia wage tax or won't, will be exempt from this. But if they make income outside of Philadelphia, that's not taxed, not subject to that, they will be subject to an EIT on that income, correct?
That is correct.
So, so we can't exclude everybody who pays Philadelphia wage tax because there could be, I don't know, a percentage of them that make money in two areas.
I guess with all due respect, I guess I would question how many people would actually fall into a category like that.
A lot of people working from home.
So just a point of clarification is that people who, ever since the pandemic, the Philadelphia Department of Revenue graciously decided that people who are working from home, they're, if they're in a community of EIT, that money is allocated to that community, but we can't promise that for forever. But it's, for people who are working from home, the EIT or wage taxes, again, Philadelphia DOR got a little weird with it since the pandemic. But the way it's supposed to work is you're supposed to pay it, you know, to where your office actually is. But the point being is that even people working from home, their tax burden's not changing, just instead of, you know, it's just a matter of where the money's going to Philly or going to borough in that scenario.
Actually, it'd be less if they're paying.
Yeah, that's true.
It's only 1/2%, it's not the 3-point, whatever it is now.
Very much.
No, because we don't have to calculate it. Burkhymmer calculates it, so it's not anything the borough has to do.
Yeah, they do it for the entire county. So each county has their own provider, in this case.
I mean, I can't, the specific case in hand, there's two examples. So my employer says I'm working at home by choice, and they take home my 4.2%, okay? There are other employers that allow you to report the number of days that you don't work in Philadelphia, and they give you a refund, okay, for that amount. Somehow, if, you know, if we were to really do this right, but I don't even know how the accounting would work, we would have to know about that amount that they got as a refund and charge EIT at that. But I don't know if that's possible for Burkhymmer to do.
Well, we can check with Burkhymmer.
Well, and I can just say that this was an issue that came up when I was working because people work in a lot of different locations, and we actually had to record how many hours we spent in different locations. And it was our employer's responsibility to make sure that was reported to whoever needed to collect tax from us. So, so there was something that happened behind the scenes that the employee didn't have to do anything with.
Yeah, but that's not how it works in this case. There's a form you fill out for all the days you didn't work in Philadelphia. And if your employer, like, says that you didn't do that, which Penn won't do anymore, okay, but I think Cindy was saying Drexel does that, and you can, you can not pay tax on city tax on that amount. But I don't know, but it's the employer, employee's responsibility. I'm not sure how that would even get tracked.
What's that on purpose? Well, no, so, well, let me clarify one thing maybe before we commit to that. All right, so the analysis we did on the EIT revenue, they basically assumed anyone working in Philly, the borough's not getting any of that money. And so from the borough's standpoint, we've already assumed if we got any of that money, that would be great, that would be a bonus. And from the perspective of the people who are paying it, again, they're paying it to somebody in this case, it's just a matter of who. So your tax burden is not going to go up because you're working, you know, in that situation. Now, the mayor's case, yeah, if you're working, if you have a job in Philly and you have a second completely different job, you know, that's based out of Narbera, then, yeah, you're going to pay, you're going to pay EIT on that Narbera job.
And just, just as a functional question, earned income taxes is like taxes that you actually work for, so it's not investment income or income like that, correct? Is it, does it, I'm unclear as to whether it applies to income earned from rental properties that you mail.
So I would encourage for questions like that, there's, we created a page on the borough website dedicated to the EIT, and some of those materials I had Burkhymmer review before we put it out there. So I would encourage anyone who has any questions about, about the EIT to look at that webpage first. And then if there are any additional questions, definitely feel free to follow up with me about it.
Any other budget questions? All right. So we have our step, our next move with the budget to pass along information about specific guidance to discuss later. Admin, admin office log.
My favorite subject. Let me get my screen shared here for the benefit of the public as well as the council. So as, so, yeah, we've had, I'll need to now a little bit here. I don't know why it's being difficult with me here. Here we go. All right, so, you know, we've had some discussions with council and finance administration about the recommendation from our now both worker stop and liability insurer about providing a more secure entryway to the administrative office. And we've also talked about the very understandable desire of council, you know, not to make it unwelcoming to members of the public. So this is similar to the design council at the last time I asked our building inspector to tell me how big could we make these windows and not create any structural or code issues? And this is the design that I got for, for council to consider.
So I know a lot of this design is coming out of sort of concerns that I raised and other people raised about, you know, the exterior. So what is the advantage of like, that's right now, you've got kind of a vestibule, you come in through a door and a small space with a bench and some chairs, and then you've got the windows in front of you to interact with borough staff, right? They're in a small room. What's the advantage of having that small room rather than sort of the hallway to be the interaction point with the borough staff?
You're saying, what's the, what's the difference between this and what we're doing right now?
No, I'm saying, I think originally, you had some pictures that were, you know, this kind of wall, but at the hallway. Like instead of, so right now, you come into the hallway, you come into the little entry room kind of, and then you have the, yeah, so you've got the entry room with the couch, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I think inside is a better, there's like a better.
Yeah, that one works. So what's the advantage of having this room rather than having kind of the access from the hallway? Because right now, you're coming into the space of that work area.
Yeah. I guess that, I'm sorry, I guess I don't understand what you mean by access from the hallway.
Well, like, trying to picture, isn't the, I mean, if you put the windows on the back, you know, the back wall where that guy, isn't that the, would that be a hallway?
That's, no, that's that wall, right there. That's the exterior wall.
Yeah, like, unfortunately, the way the building.
I'm just confused, I'm a way, I guess.
It's the, that's the exterior wall. I think you're thinking of the fact that, you know, when you come in, it's like, it feels like there's more space there, but that's all the steps going into the building.
Okay. Yeah. Maybe I'm just not picturing the entry problem. All right. Never mind. Let's draw my concerns.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, well, now I'm really confused.
Yeah. The door is the same, in the same location?
Yes. And so, so on the other side of these doors is where the bathrooms are, right? Put in this?
Yeah. Okay. So you're just, you're just taking a few feet from your current office to create this?
Yeah.
This vestibule. And, I mean, the wall doesn't go all the way up, is there? It does not. It goes about, I guess it's like, well, I guess there's measurements probably on the first picture, but it's like it was about seven feet up. Actually, I'll, instead of guessing, I'll go back to the first picture that actually has some measurements. Probably there's a, I'll give that view and you have, sorry to have you in motion sickness Now, is that measurements for the, for the window? Not sensing a lot of excitement and enthusiasm for this. I mean, I'll admit, I don't feel a lot of excitement and enthusiasm for this either. It's just that our current setup, you know, is not really good either. And, you know, I think it's been a struggle with the way the building is laid out to find something that meets the goals that, you know, council has asked us to try and meet with this.
Have we asked, I don't know, there are a couple architects, I think, on the planning commission, have we asked any of them? Because I think this is all done by engineer or someone like, someone, so it's like from a very kind of just technical, okay, this is what you asked, and here's. Because I, I just, I kind of wonder, is there any way, I mean, it is awkward, the way you come in to, I mean, the fact that you walk in and look right at bathroom doors is weird. That design is strange. Is there, is there anything that they would say, well, you could, like, is there a portion of a wall that could be taken out that could allow a different entry? I don't know. So it's where I'm like, to me, it's like an architect would be the one to ask for something like that. So I just wondered if we considered that.
So I did share with. So I did share with the staff that Yorkies, the direction from council on prior meetings to try and incorporate that feedback, but I've had to verify what, how they, how they did or did not solicit that feedback.
Okay, because I'm just, I don't know, you just see so many things done with buildings these days where people are able to shift things around in ways that I can't picture because I'm not, it's not my job, not my skill set.
So maybe it's, I don't know, maybe it's somewhere where I can, I think it might be at this point, while I appreciate the work they've done, I think it might be at this point, time to, you know, take Yorkies out of the loop on this, and, you know, maybe I'll have Michelle Carroll, my assistant, contact, you know, folks like either Todd Bresser or Dave Brower, or Jim Cornwell directly, and see, see what sort of advice they have, and how we could try and meet the needs of the staff and, and council and the public.
Yeah, I think some volunteer advice would be good here, if we can get some, so Yorkies has been fairly expensive trying to sort through this process, I think there's been, people aren't happy with what's come out of it, so.
Oh, hey, also, Heidi Boiz on the planning commission might be able to offer you some good advice.
Yeah, this is what, definitely Heidi Dallas sort of thing that she's, interior kind of, yeah, space reorganization, she works a lot with older properties, so she thinks about how to, you know, how to move things around and get our constraint. Yeah, I think, it took me this long to finally figure out where this partition is. Really, really challenging.
We've looked at it a lot in FNA, and that's what, I know what this is, you know, and I have the same feeling you did in the first off.
I've just been completely baffled.
Yes.
Like, you're, I just couldn't make it in my head, like, now I finally feel, oh, I see what it is.
Yes.
So, sorry, it sounds like.
On the other side, I mean, once it all met, like, I, you know, did not hold a ton of enthusiasm for this design either, so, I mean, again, you get the photos of Yorkies, I mean, they did their best to do what, like, what I told them to do, interpreting what council had said, so it's certainly no, you know, no fault in theirs in that regard.
We're just, we're getting what they could provide, which is this.
I mean, I know when we looked at, at the four photos from a month ago, there was, I just, I called up my computer now, I remember, it was Swackmore, Phoenixville, Limerick, and Lower Saucony.
Is Saucony, how do you say it?
Lower Saucony, I never know how to say that. And we've looked at those, I mean, I think that, even though I can't pronounce it, the way that Lower Saucony had it, it was, it was something that appealed to, I know it appealed to council members, I think we should just, just, you did put the picture in there, which means I interpreted it as being something that's not beyond the pale, it's something you wouldn't consider, it doesn't have like a transaction, you know, right, it has a barrier that's, it's in the form of like, it's a desk type space that's integrated, so like a banking desk, and with a lower, you know, like a, I don't know, there's something appealing about that because it's just nice and open, and it feels like it, you know, finally provides a barrier, a barrier that a person can just, you know, walk right in, but it's not, it doesn't provide as much separation as a wall and a window. It may not need to be cut out of the office, the same, it almost could be, oh, remember where the old waist-high barrier was? Yeah, L-shaped one, it could almost be like, it was, it used to be like an L-shaped, I don't even know how you describe it, it was like a, it was like a waist-high.
It's like a teller height.
Like a teller height tower, right? It was like an L shape, so you'd come in, so it would be that way, and then it just kind of, yeah.
Get it around a little bit more than what you have now, but it also, but it also didn't allow much space if more than a couple people from the public came in, that was a crowded little area.
It was not, you couldn't, it was many.
No place to sit down, so if you were an older person, or someone who just, you know, they, I don't know, had foot surgery, you couldn't sit anywhere, it was not the best, but it was, it was terrible, it just wasn't the best.
Yeah, so thank you for, for asking.
All right, let's move on to our action items. So nine A is the resolution we discussed about the grants. Someone like to make a, we have to name a motion to vote on this.
I move that we consider Resolution 2022-21 to apply for the PICO Green Energy Grant for the master, for Master Park Fire.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion of this?
One question, I just wanted to clarify, is there a matching with this, because?
There is, so there's a, it's a 50-50 grant, but we're allowed to match it with a DCNR grant.
Thank you, because I wondered, when you said our outlay would only be $4,000 if we got both of these, I was like, I'm not, I'm confused now, but I remember there's a match, so, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, so let's vote on this resolution to apply for the PICO Green Region Grant. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I think.
Because we lost Bob. So, all right, five D R. Let's move on to nine B, so, all right.
I'll have to make the motion first, and then it's my.
Good point, someone might to make a motion.
I move that we consider hiring Maury Need as a public works crew person.
Can I ask you, refrain that to confirm the hiring?
Oh.
Consider.
Oh, okay, I move that we confirm the hiring of Maury Need as a public works crew person.
Is there a second? Okay.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. With the borough manager ordinance, the reason we're voting on this tonight is, I'm given the power to make hiring decisions, but the borough council has to confirm that decision at its next public meeting. So as you may remember, at your last meeting, you had to vote to accept the resignation of Mike Watznack from our public works group, so after doing a search for his replacement, our public works manager found Maury Need, I was impressed, if you look at his resume, he has been with the same employer since he, you know, even before he graduated high school, for about 10 years now, and about every two or three years, he got promoted to more, a position of more responsibility, so I felt that was really encouraging. He brings a skill set that's currently missing to public works in regards to automotive maintenance, so one of the tasks that Jeff would have to him among other regular public work duties is making sure, especially if we're getting these new vehicles, that both the public works and police vehicles that we're getting are, you know, kept in good shape, and will offset the aim of a new vehicle, even the minimal maintenance costs you have, will be able to offset a lot of that, but having Maury on the public works team, so I certainly support it, and I hope council agrees.
And just to clarify the budgetary impact, this is already assumed, this hire is already baked into the current budget, right?
And it's correct.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, let's vote to confirm hiring Maury Need as public works crew person, all those in favor? Okay, motion passes, pass here. Let's move on to committee reports, infrastructure. Infrastructure's first.
I'm going to focus on the Borough Hall energy audit, I think most of the other topics we've already discussed as part of the budget request. So Panoni presented their, their audit report for Borough Hall, they focused on electric-powered and gas-powered equipment and the building envelope, and they said that when they compared to similar buildings, that our energy usage is relatively low and better than Energy Star standards. The lighting was inventory, and it's fairly clear that an LED replacement project would have a very quick payoff. They also discussed the windows, and while there is some leakage on the windows, the payback period for replacing the windows is 150 years, and the Panoni person suggested there might be other solutions involving sealing the windows better, that would be a better choice for us at this time. The boiler is at end of life, and, but unfortunately, the, the sort of electric boilers aren't really available yet, and she suggested that replacing the boiler with a natural gas boiler would be the easiest and least expensive alternative, however, the general consensus is we want to try, try to wait, so at our next meeting, we're going to hear a little bit more from Panoni about like, how quickly we can replace it if it completely failed.
How cheerful, all right.
Well, sorry.
Thank you, it's good to know.
We talked about the bridge, we talked about the Elmont Avenue Bridge already, and then there's a plan in place to replace the front area in front of this building with concrete so that it's graded properly and the water doesn't flow into the building, and the rusty steps are replaced and graded, and there's a little rain garden that's going to be created in that planter, and then, well, you already mentioned the stormwater, that contract has been awarded.
So what are the funding for the project, the Borough Hall project that you're discussing? Is that, is that going to be in next year's budget, is that part of the, is this the capital fund now?
Uh, no, it's covered under the, under the borrowing for repairs for, under COMI.
Oh, and I should just add that we can't replace the carpet in the front hallway until we do this project, because it's just going to get wet again.
Good that you told us that. Questions? All right, Finance Administration, somebody is not here, so.
We did not come prepared to talk about it because I.
Maybe I can add.
Thank you, yes, I didn't have that, I didn't know, I remembered, but it's been a while since I learned it.
Maybe between our team members, we can, it's together.
We already, we already discussed it the last.
Oh, that's right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you have a.
We have a nonsense then, no wonder I can't, that's what happens when you're in the borough for two weeks, you forget things.
Public health and safety program, same thing.
Yeah, we're meeting tomorrow morning at 8:00, so I can update everyone after that.
Okay. And add on parking.
It's the same as today, we have not met since our last council meeting, but our next meeting is a week from tomorrow at 8:00 AM, October 14.
All right, I was expecting to have a discussion about the aesthetic guidelines for the barriers of the two people who've been most injured in Monaco.
I know, that's on, that's on the agenda for the 20th.
All right, great, so that was lovely.
Which is favorite topic.
Yeah, the research has been done, so hopefully we're getting closer to decision point. Announcements for the good of council. Yes, council has an open house tomorrow, which is also First Friday, there will be a fire pit, a safety, and smores with the fire department kind of at the side of Borough Hall, right, and council will be there as well, be discussing, you know, any topics of interest to the communities, go on over, and enjoy First Friday. That is between 7:00 and 8:00. Okay, that is between 7:00 and 8:00, and then First Friday in general will be like 6:00 to 9:00-ish, I think, and I will include, you know, art exhibits through the downtown and various stores staying open late, so check it out, come and say hello to us. Is there any other announcements? Okay, we will be having an executive session to discuss a personnel matter related to employee compensation, and a personnel matter regarding the job description, and I do not believe we will return after this executive session. I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
For a second, okay, all those in favor of adjourning? Okay, we are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.
Take a, take a couple minutes here, and, all right, two minute break.